Item number two on our agenda is citizens' appearance. Person signed up to speak must sign and register and list their address. Presentations by individuals should be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks of any speaker should be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual group or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have two people that have signed up to speak tonight, and the first one is Mr. Dave Shaw. Dave?
Thank you. My name is Dave Shaw. 215 West Wing Drive, Capel. It's going to be my regular advocacy for equitable billing on utilities and services. First topic is garbage collection. Rates are increasing by about 25% for 25, 26. We currently get two trash pickups per week and one recycle. However, not all households are able to take full advantage of this schedule, especially senior citizens. Most, if not all, senior households only put out one trash can per week and fill recycle bins less than once every two weeks. Likewise, bulk pickups and yard debris are also far less available. Seniors currently receive a 10% discount on the service, but I submit that at least a 25% would be much more equitable and fair based on actual service needed. They should not be made to subsidize larger households and/or extra services not required by them. Second topic is likewise, too much of the cost of water usage comes from the base charge and allotment. Households, especially senior and small ones, are as such subsidizing larger properties and users. A household using only 5,000 gallons per month is effectively paying $7.44 per thousand gallons, but ones using 25,000 gallons a month are only paying $4.31 per thousand gallons. A change to increase the basic allotment from 1,000 gallons base to the more typical in most cities allow 2,000 gallons base would partially affect equity inequity, and reducing the basic charge some more would further mitigate the concern. And raising mid-level and higher-tier usage prices would further provide the necessary revenue on a much more equitable basis. And as you know, I consider the stormwater fee to be an inherently flawed concept as it is not a true utility and is basically taxing every property equally regardless of size for rainfall runoff of which a property owner has no control over. To be equitable and fair, any charges for maintenance of the drainage system should be based on land area, which in essence is the property value. Again, currently, small households are being required to pay a disproportionate share of this actual infrastructure cost and are essentially subsidizing larger property owners. Finally, I personally can understand being nickel-and-dime to death on fees. Case in point is the 10 cent charge every month for a public education fee. What is this for and why is it necessary, especially being basically a meaningless token fee? Public education is not the responsibility of the city as far as I know. Likewise, if the city is going to continue to deny citizens use of cash, AKA legal tender, they should not charge fees to use any other normally acceptable form of payment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our second speaker is Mr. Jeff Borneil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What Mr. Dave said and this.
Name and address while you're looking for it.
Jeff Borneil, 1601 East Sandy Lake Road.
Thank you.
For three months, our citizens have been getting invitation emails about these various budget meetings that our two cents matters. There's a complete disconnect here because clearly our two cents don't matter. Last year, I summoned a standing room crowd to the second floor conference room where the citizens were assured that the council would find $1.5 million in budget cuts to accomplish a no-new revenue rate for the 2025 budget. All the attendees were appeased, only later to find out that the council came back to their next meeting and only to find the unanimous approval of the 2025 budget, generating $2 million more revenue for the city, a 3.8% increase from the previous year. The budget is what drives our tax bills, not the value of our properties because council sets the tax rate. Our city budget and city spending is out of control. Our budget doubled in the last 10 years. It has grown from $97 million in 2015 to over $180 million today. Clearly, the most liberal tax setters in America concede that that's not sustainable, tax rate setters. We have grown the city budget and city employees while our population base has remained flat. We are following the TML playbook to a T. Grow the budget, increase the number of employees regardless of the growth of the city. Our real estate market is suffering because of our affordability. That's a direct correlation to city taxes. At the end of June, we had 109 homes for sale, a 20% increase from year-over-year from 2024. We have 3.5 months' worth of inventory. That's more homes at the end of quarter, second quarter than I can ever remember in my 35 years in Capel. Just this year alone, I've listed and sold three homes for clients leaving Capel saying they just can't afford the taxes here anymore. We are no longer a family community for our lifetime. We have become a community for those who can afford the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Okay, item number three is the majority of our agenda for tonight. Kim is going to be presenting tonight's agenda, kind of giving us an overview of what we're going to be talking about, and then she's going to go directly into item number four, which includes items A through E. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening is our third and final budget workshop on the proposed fiscal year '26 budget. Tonight, I will start by sharing a few highlights and then go over changes incorporated after both the June 23rd and July 7th budget workshops. After that, I will share the certified value information. We did receive values from both Dallas and Denton appraisal districts last Friday. After the values, I will share the tax rate needed to support the proposed budget, and then I will provide a comparison of the 2024 tax bill to the 2025 tax bill. And I will end by showing you a receipt that outlines how your city property taxes cover the costs of each service you receive as part of your investment in this community. So let's begin. As I mentioned, a few highlights about the proposed '26 budget. The proposed budget is a balanced budget. As mentioned in the previous workshops, a budget is balanced if the revenues and the proposed use of the fund balance is equal to or exceeds the proposed expenditures. This will be important to remember when reviewing the general fund budget, the water sewer fund, and some of the special revenue funds. Remember, we have a signed fund balance of the general fund that we are using for one-time projects. For the special revenue funds, it's important to remember that special revenue funds receive revenue that is restricted for a specific use. So revenue is often added to fund balance until that specific use is identified. When we find a use that meets the requirement, it's identified and then it is budgeted as an expenditure, and so often the expenditure will exceed the revenue in that particular given year. The next is the proposed budget maintains current service levels, and I mention this because you will hear about a few more staff reductions. During the July 7th workshop, I shared that eight positions were being removed from the general fund, with three moved to water sewer and then five eliminated. All of the eliminated positions are positions that are currently vacant or will become vacant due to a retirement that has been announced. So each decision was made using a strategic and analytical approach that carefully considered the impact of service levels before determining whether to fill the position or to eliminate the position. In addition, the proposed budget is built around direction given by council at both the January and May retreats, and then feedback that you provided at the June 23rd and July 7th budget workshops. Specifically, direction provided by council at the retreats was to build a budget that continues to assume the sales tax rule 3.334 is in effect since litigation is continuing, that the property tax revenue, not the tax rate, but the revenue, would increase 3.499%, which is the ceiling for this revenue source and not our starting point. There would be a strategic use of general fund's fund balance, and that this budget would include necessary salary adjustments to maintain employees in the top third. This evening, I will also point out changes incorporated into the budget based on direction given at the June and July budget workshops, as well as any changes requested by directors or changes based on new information that was received since those workshops. And last, the proposed general fund operating expenditure budget is increasing 2.38% over the 2025 budgeted operating expenditures. Remember, operating expenditures excludes one-time transfers and one-time uses of fund balance for items funded from the, for example, the assigned fund balance of the general fund. So the one-time transfer of $5.5 million from the general fund to the municipal utility drainage district as directed by council on May 6th at that council retreat is excluded from operating expenditures. In addition, the cost of the 2040 initiatives shown in council's Vision 2040 work plan for the fiscal year '26 are also excluded from operating expenditures since those items are one-time uses of assigned fund balance. I have a tendency to focus on the general fund, so I thought I'd also mention the total operating expenditures of all funds combined is increasing 1.76%. Before we move from this topic, I did want to share a couple of other comments. The first is that the increase in CPI from January of '24 to May of '25 was about 4%. But the proposed general fund budget for the operating, general fund budget operating expenditures and the total expenditures of all funds of the city combined are increasing less than CPI. The modest increase in expenditures does demonstrate fiscal stewardship and the use of strategies mentioned during the five-year forecast presentation made at the May 6th council retreat. So specifically, I'm sharing this slide with you again tonight, and I shared it with you at the last budget workshop, and this slide is a visual of what we refer to as the Austin Gap. Basically, the Austin Gap is referring to the limitations placed on property tax revenue generated by municipalities. Yes, I'm referring to what was referred to when legislation passed as SB 2. SB 2 moved from limiting the increase in the tax rate to limiting property tax revenue. Before SB 2, the increase in the property tax rate was limited to 8%. Today, the growth in the property tax revenue is limited to 3.499. The state has placed a limitation on revenue growth that is basically capping expenditures at less than the growth in inflation. This limitation, that again doesn't even keep up with inflation, causes the gap between revenues and expenditures shown on this slide. The red bar on the slide is the projected expenditures of the general fund. It includes a 5% growth in salary and benefits, modest growth in supplies, maintenance and services, and then any requests from departments. The blue represents projected revenue that increases property tax revenue by 3.499, and the gray bar represents projected revenue that keeps property tax revenues flat, meaning no increase in property tax revenue. The Austin Gap is the difference between projected expenditures and these two revenue scenarios. On the right side of this slide are the strategies identified by the assistant director group that could be used to close the gap. You might recall that during the last budget workshop, as I covered the expenditures of the general fund, I shared the strategies used by each department to help close the Austin Gap, beginning with the proposed fiscal year '26 budget, because we know that the strategies we employ today will have a continued impact on future years. As I mentioned earlier, three positions were removed from the water, moved to water sewer from the general fund for the streets department, and five other positions were eliminated. And you will hear about a couple of additional reductions when I cover the changes since the last two workshops. These reductions will have a compounding positive impact on future budgets that will help us reduce the Austin Gap. So that concludes my introductory comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions on the information I've provided thus far.
Kim?
Thanks, Kim. So what's the rate of inflation that's being incorporated into the projections going forward?
So we're using a 5% on salary and benefits, and then we are using a 3% to 4% on the other supplies, maintenance and services.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
Do you have any kind of idea, plan, all of the reorganization and leveraging? I mean, at some point, we're going to hit a plateau. Is there any extrapolation on the number of years that we're going to be operating in this mode before we hit that plateau?
Yeah, so let me take that one. We're starting this because we see what will happen in 2030. If we don't start now reducing our specifically more personnel expenses, if we don't start reducing them now, we'll never catch up to that red line. I think you, on the cumulative impact on the changes that we've had right now over the five-year period, is it a little over $2 million?
2.8.
No, closer to $3 million, just the changes we're implementing this year to help. So the red line you're seeing is not incorporating the changes that we're making starting this year. So next year, when you see that, hopefully that red line gets a little bit closer to the blue line. Plus, the changes that we implement next year will help us start bringing it down even further. The objective is, because the reality is that's the way we adopt budgets, again, I go back to what I was able to do in 2017, I can pretty much tell you what our revenues are going to be in 2030. So I know what my expenditures have to match up to, to present a balanced budget. So if we don't start reducing our expenses now, we will be out of alignment. So that's the best way to answer the question. So each year, you're going to hear us talk about reduction in personnel or reduction in some certain expenses, because there's no way around this.
So I think the number I was looking for is about five years, 23rd. Thank you. Bremesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on what Mike just shared, at this time, do we have any estimate of what services would have to be dialed down?
No, we don't. The objective is that we're not having to reduce services because that's not the expectation that they have in this community. We haven't had anyone in this community tell us to do less. So our job is to figure out how do we provide the services this community expects with that limit on revenues. That's what we're doing, and that's what we're working towards every, basically every day now for the next five years.
Continue? Okay. So next, I will point out the changes made to the proposed budget, changes that were either directed again by councils during the previous workshops, were requested by departments after those two workshops were held, or are based on new information that we've received from third parties since those workshops. And I will begin with the special revenue funds. So first is the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, which can be found on page 18 in your packet, and I believe we sent out the link, so you should have the page also.
You did, yeah.
And the page numbers should match up this time. So page 18 of your packet, we did remove the $250,000 transfer to the general fund as directed by council on July 7th at that workshop. In addition, the burial rights revenues was adjusted to reflect the removal of the 15% that is recorded in the perpetual care fund. In future budgets, staff will continue to include the $250,000 transfer and then request council's direction on whether they want to keep that in or if they want us to remove it. Next is the Capel Recreational Development Corp., Corporation. CRDC can be found on page 19 in your packet. Community Experiences continues to utilize the reorganizing roles and evaluating vendor services as strategies when creating their budget. The Community Experience Department requested to combine three part-time, no-benefit positions at the art center into one full-time position, which resulted in a reduction in staff of one-half of an FTE. The reorganization will have a positive impact on the services provided by the art center to the community. The team believes this change will result in better customer service to the private rental clients, as the reorganization provides a full-time person to walk through the rental process with the client from beginning to end. Not only does this change have a positive impact on the services received by those renting spaces at the art center, but also having a full-time person dedicated to renting spaces at the art center should have a positive impact on rental revenue. In addition, this reorganization will not impact other areas. The budget impact was basically neutral, and no change was made to salary and benefits, and I am sharing this with you as the number of FTEs for the city has been decreased by one-half of a, one-half FTE. The next special revenue fund is the Crime Control and Prevention District, which can be found on page 23 in the budget packet. Based on direction from the CCPD Board and Council at the June 23rd public hearing and budget workshop, the salary reimbursement from CISD was removed. Next year, the salary reimbursement will be included, and then again, council can provide direction on whether to keep it in or to remove it. So are there any questions on the special revenue funds?
Thanks, Kim. I have a question. So you reduced by one-half of the art center staff, but then that one person which becomes full-time also gets benefits, correct?
Right.
So what's the net?
It was like less than $5,000 was the net impact, so that's why.
Okay. Thank you.
Because they weren't getting benefits, and the one is getting benefits. So next is the water sewer fund, specifically expenses, which can be found on page 28 of your packet. The cost of water was reduced by about $758,000 from what was presented at the June workshop, and this is because the volume rate increased 12.3%. It went from about 57 cents per thousand gallons to about 64 cents per thousand gallons, and then the demand rate actually decreased 0.1%, $436, but it was a decrease. So it went from about $357,000 for each million gallons of demand per day to $356.5,000. Remember, we do budget for 19.5 million gallons of demand per day, but we are contractually obligated, and we pay for just 18.5 million gallons. So the overall impact of both rates is a 2.6% increase in the cost of water. Last year, the overall increase in the cost of water was about 9%, and our presentation on the 23rd did assume a higher overall increase, so we were pleasantly surprised when we received rates from Dallas Water Utilities. Right here. So the cost of sewer is next, and that decreased about $495,000 from what was presented on June 23rd. The budget presented at the June workshop estimated that rates would increase about 16%, and the new rates only increased about 13.5%. I know I said only, but the increase was less than expected. The rate went from about $3.96 per thousand gallons flow to $4.49 per thousand gallons of flow. So the total change for the proposed budget presented on January 23rd to what's in your packet tonight is a decrease of almost $1.3 million in the expenses of the water sewer Next is the retained earnings walk forward, which can be found on page 32. In the top section, you can see the proposed 2026 budgeted expenses exceeds revenues by about $596,000. Even though there's a loss projected, the undesignated retained earnings is still 180 days, and remember, we're budgeting for 19.5 million gallons of daily demand, but our contractual obligation is only to take 18.5 right now. So because the cost of that 1 million gallons is about $356.5,000, if we don't take that bump, then the loss would only be about $239,000 for the water sewer fund. Remember that we do evaluate whether a rate increase is needed once we get all of the information for this current fiscal year and see how the year ends, and then we bring any rate increase recommendations to you in the November or December timeframe. So are there any questions regarding the water and sewer fund? So next is the general fund. I'm going to begin with the changes in expenditures. General fund expenditures can be found on pages 33 and 34. The first change is an increase in public works overall budget shown on page 33. Specifically, the traffic division increased $189,000 to cover that 51% proposed increase in encores rates for streetlights, and that was mentioned to you at the July 7th workshop. In addition, Community Experience, found on page 34, as I said, continues to utilize the reorganizing roles as vacancies occur strategy, as this department submitted a request that reduces the total culture and recreation proposed budget by a little over $156,000. So since the July 7th budget workshop, Community Experience identified two additional positions that will become vacant as a result of announced retirements. One position is the recreation technician position at the senior and community center, and the other is the administrative services coordinator at the library. Reducing staff at these two locations will not result in reduction in programs or services offered to their members. This is an opportunity to reimagine all staff roles in a way that strengthens their teams and enhances member experiences. If you're keeping count, we are now up to 10 positions removed from the general fund, with three moved to water sewer and seven eliminated. Between the general fund and CRDC, that's 7.5 FTEs that have been removed from the budget and employee count. So next, I'll show changes in the revenue of the general fund, which can be found on page 36 and 37 in the packet. Both changes are reductions in revenue of the general fund. First is the property tax revenue. It decreased about $18,000, and that is just simply a change based on doing an actual tax rate calculation and having the actual certified values. The other revenue source that decreased is the other revenue category on page 37. We did remove the transfer from Rolling Oaks as directed by council, and I mentioned when we covered special revenue funds. Page 39 is where you will find the general fund's fund balance walk forward. The top section of the walk forward has been updated to reflect the revenues and expenditure changes that I just covered. The bottom section was also updated to reflect the impact on the changes in the, changes based on all of the line items that are affected by the fund balance policy and charter requirements, as well as the $2.2 million, $2.2 million that will be used for 2040 initiatives was removed from the 2040, Vision 2040 initiative assigned fund balance. Are there any questions on general fund? So the last fund is debt service. This fund is on page 41 of your packet, and the only change is revenue, specifically, again, the property tax revenue changed slightly, and the change is just based on we did the actual tax rate calculation because we had the certified values. So are there any questions here? So now that we've covered what's included in the budget and the revenues needed to support the budget, we will move to the topic I know you've all been waiting for. And that is the certified values and the property tax rate calculation. And I'm going to begin with the assessed valuations. So if you'll look at page 45 of your packet. So page 45 of your packet and this slide show the final certified valuation for the tax year 2025 compared to the certified valuation for tax year 2024. The result is a 6.61% total assessed increase of the total assessed value of the city. If you recall, I did use a growth rate of 7% in the estimated estimates that I presented to you on July 7. So recalling the CSOL as value payment lower. So the tax rate you're going to see is going to be slightly higher than what I showed you on the 7. So next, we're going to take a deeper dive into these assessed valuations, and we're going to stay on page 45 of your packet. The information in the chart on the left of this slide is found at the top of page 45. The slide shows the comparison of taxable value for the property categories for all property in Capel in 2024 compared to 2025. The year-to-year comparison by category is also represented by the graph on the right. On page 45, the far right-hand section shows the 2025 tax year certified taxable value is almost $12.5 billion, which is an increase in value of almost $774 million over the 2024 certified values. The table shows that the combined value of all commercial property in Capel is approximately 4% more than in 2024. Looking at page 45 in your packet, you can see the growth in the commercial values from '23 to '24 was much higher at almost 23%. For residential, the slide in page 45 shows that the change in the combined value of all residential property in Capel is almost 8%. Looking at the page 45 in your packet, you can see the growth in residential property was about 8% last year, too. Last, the change between years for business personal property is about 7.5%. And typically, we only see an increase here in the 2% to 3% range. At this time, I don't know what's causing that increase in value, but that is something that we're looking into. For 2025, the breakout of total property property value between commercial, which is combined with business personal property versus residential is a split of 46% of the value comes from the commercial business personal property and 54% of the split comes from residents. This does represent a slight change from previous year. Last year, the breakout was 47% versus 53. And then back in '21, '22, and '23, the breakout was commercial property represented 45% and residents represented 55%. Do you have any questions on this slide? We will, the next slide is going to take an even deeper dive into property values. So this is at the bottom of page 45. This bottom section shows the breakout between new construction and reappraisals. So of that 734 million, this is where that increase in values is coming from. The first section is the new construction, and it makes up about 74 million or almost 10% of the increase in value. In 2024, new construction makes up almost 41 million or about 3.5% of the increase in the value. Page 45 shows a breakout of the value from new construction between commercial, residential, and business personal property, just like with on this slide. Commercial makes up about 67 million or about 9% of the total increase in value. The growth from residential new construction accounts for about 7 million or about 1% of the total growth. And then the next section shows the breakdown from reappraisals. Reappraisals are initiated by the appraisal district. Reappraisals make up just under 600 million or about 73% of the increase in value. Commercial reappraisals make up about 90 million or 12% of the increase in growth. And residential makes up about 476 million or about 61% of the growth in values. And the growth in value from business personal property is about 133 million and represents 17% of the increase in value. So are there any questions concerning the valuation? So the next slide is from the middle of page 46 in your packet. And I want to make a disclaimer. We have not received the rate calculation from Dallas County, which is the official calculation for the city. So the rates you see are not official, but I can tell you that the city has always agreed with them. Staff has always calculated a rate that agrees with the county. So we're fairly confident that these are the rates that county will come up with. I just need to make the disclaimer. So page 46 and the right-hand columns show the tax rate and the tax revenue for the proposed budget. It is the amount that's needed to care for our infrastructure, which includes our facilities like the Core, the Tenor Center, the Senior Center, and the Library. It's what's needed to care for our streets, our sidewalks, our alleys, and our traffic system. It is the revenue needed to provide services covered by our Community Development Department and our Community Experiences Team and our Police and Fire Departments. Services our residents have not only told us they want, but they have also expressed the level of service they want us to provide. It's revenue needed after removing 10 positions from the General Fund. So the proposed tax rate is the .444976, which is almost 1.4 pennies less than the current tax rate of the .458632. This is about 3% less than the current tax rate. The proposed maintenance and operations revenue is about 47 million. And this is compared to the 45 million. It is a 3.4% increase over the current property tax revenue. That increase is less than the increase in CPI of 4%. As a comparison, this is about a $1.6 million increase in property tax revenue. The total public safety budget alone increased $1.1 million this year. So that leaves about $500,000 for the other areas of the city, the areas that I mentioned, infrastructure maintenance, community development, and community experiences. So are there any questions on this slide? So the next slide, this slide, provides you a comparison of the fiscal year 25 tax bill versus the fiscal year 26 tax bill for the average valued home in Capel. This slide is in your packet. And it does, this first slide was presented to you at the July 7 meeting, and it has been updated to reflect the average assessed value based on certified values for a property receiving a homestead exemption. In addition, the tax rate is reflecting the proposed tax rate calculated using the certified values. The tax rate will decrease just under, again, one and a half pennies. The amount circled in red at the bottom shows the change in the tax bill of a residential property receiving the homestead exemption. Based on the average value of a residential property with a homestead exemption, the city's portion of the property tax bill will increase about $119 for the year or $10 per month. This represents just under a 5% increase. It's a 4.8% increase. So although the average assessed value on a residential property increased 8%, the decrease in the tax rate of 3% reduces the increase in the tax bill to 4.8%. And this is the CSOL. This is the CSOL in effect. Values when that tax rate comes down. This next slide is the tax bill receipt, and we hadn't handed that out to you. This slide shows that the average residential property taxpayer is paying about $593 annually for fire protection and paramedic services and about $300 annually for police services. Public Safety totals about $943 annually and makes up 43% of the total tax bill. Next is Public Works, which totals about $310 annually and makes up about 14% of the tax bill. Together, Public Safety and Public Works, who are considered first responders, make up 57% of the property tax bill. Services covered by the Community Development Department, the next section, totals just under $100 for the year and makes up 4% of the total tax bill. And then Culture and Recreation, which is our Community Experiences Department, makes up about 386 annually. And that covers the services offered by the Library, the Core, the Senior Center, the Tenor Center. And these services make up 18% of the total tax bill. The last area is General Government, which totals approximately $450 for the year and makes up 21% of the total tax bill. General Government is where we have IT, HR, finance procurement, Council's budget, City Manager's Office, Legal, the Community Information Office, and then Combined Services. They're all located in this in this area. And these are the departments that serve other funds and other departments. One thing I do want to note is the one-time use of fund balance was removed from this category. Since fund balance is being used, it's not taken into consideration in this in this property tax bill. The receipt also shows the amount paid by the average residential taxpayer for outstanding bonds that were issued to refund things like Beltline Road, Royal Lane, the Fire Station 4 and Fire Station 5, to name a couple, a few projects. So the overall, the average residential property owner is paying about $215 per month for both the services provided by the city and investment in the city's infrastructure. And then the last slide I have is I did the calculation for somebody who's receiving an over-65 exemption along with the homestead. The bill is about $2100 or about $445 less than somebody who's only receiving the homestead exemption. So are there any questions on these slides?
Can you repeat that? The difference between the the standard bill with just the the homestead exemption versus the senior bill? I just couldn't hear the numbers.
Sure, it's a senior is paying $445 less.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, as always, thanks for a wonderful presentation. From the top of your head, can you, do you remember what is the total dollars we are using from the different fund balances?
So I can tell you. So for General Fund, we're using 5.5 million that we're transferring to the Drainage Utility District that Council directed us to you. And then the other is 2.2 million. And that is coming from the Assigned Fund Balance, the 2040 Initiatives. Those are the intended uses that we did. And then the other one is Water Sewer Fund, which I mentioned. We'll be using some of the retained earnings there just simply because revenues don't cover expenditures. And then I know, let me, I haven't noted. So we also have. Do you guys have it? No, it's. It must be all the ones that had it, and I haven't noted. Okay. So E911 is one. I believe that expenditures will exceed revenues. And that is because we are funding the cost of replacement radials for the Fire Department out of that fund. And that's a special revenue fund. We've identified a source. Tree preservation, that's one where we don't budget revenues, but we do budget to use for trees. And then the other one is Police Special Revenue. Again, they receive money and just depending on when we identify the uses of it, you're aware that the cemetery has a slight deficit of about $8,000. Those aren't, but none of those are intended like we've assigned fund balance. Those are just uses of fund balance.
Thank you. And if I could rephrase my question, and I do need the answer right now. Later on, if you can do the net of all the money going into the different fund balances and the money that is going to be burned the next fiscal year, is it a net positive or a net negative? I don't need the answer right now, but later on. Thank you.
May you? Can I?
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, the last session, you had given us the five heads. I mean, ignoring the heads that are being transferred, there were five FTEs that were being reduced. And today, you mentioned five, three from Community Experiences, correct?
I, I, so today, there are two from Community Experiences. One from the Senior Center, one from the Library. And then we took three part-time no-benefits and made one full-time. So that's a half a position.
But I thought the cost wasn't washed because we're going to pay benefits.
But it's still a reduction in staff. And we show that in the budget. And there are some who who look at the number of positions that we have. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed out that we were reducing.
So that's 2.5?
So for the General Fund, we are removing 10 positions. However, waters, three of those 10 are going to Water Sewer.
Got it.
Okay? And then we are reducing other funds. So CRDC, we're reducing it by a half of an FTE. So in total, your employee count is going down by 7.5 in total for the city.
Thank you.
10 of those are impact property taxes because they're property tax funded funds.
Kim, I have a question that I've been pondering since we got started. And it was at the very beginning of your presentation. It was on the Water Sewer. There. So you were saying that our budget, or it says here that our budget decreased, but you were saying the cost went up.
So when we presented the June 23 budget, we were, we came up with our own estimates because we did not have rates from Dallas Water Utilities or TRA. And we were basing that on historical information. We received rates in July after that. So I wanted to update you. Based on the new rates that we received from both entities, we reduced that proposed budget by almost 1.3 million. Because now it's based on their rates.
Thank you. On the topic, it looks like we estimated the volume and we estimated the rate. The rate went up, but the estimated volume came down. Therefore, the budget went down?
No.
All right, I'm sorry.
So I think, so are you talking water? Are you talking sewer? Okay. So sewer is based on 3.3 million gallons of flow per day. That was what we told them last year. That's what we told them this year. So the change in the cost of sewer is strictly due to the rates that they're charging us. And we overprojected. So their rate came in less than what we thought. So that's why you're seeing a decrease. The cost of water, we budget for 19.5 million gallons of demand, but we are contractually obligated right now to 18.5. And that was Council's direction a while back, was to go ahead and do the 19.5 in case we needed to take that hit. So we go ahead and budget to be prepared for that. And then the the volume rate, we're still using about 3.4 billion gallons is what was in my calculation. Is what I used. is what was in my calculation, is what I used. And that, and we just keep that consistent. Actual can be more or less, we're just using that for projection. Actual is based on actual, whatever we actually purchase.
So just from my perspective, there is an overall increase in cost of water and sewer services. So don't take away when she says budget decreased. It's based on a document where we estimated what the increase would be. Right? So when you hear that, it's not a decrease in actual what our expenses are going to be, it's a decrease on what our estimated budget number was going to be.
A better comparison would be to last year.
Yeah, it's a higher, the water, the water and sewer costs have not gone down by the Dallas Water Utilities or the River Authority. They've continually increased year to year.
And I mentioned, the increase from last year to this year is two-point-six percent. Last year, the increase was nine percent. That's why we used a higher rate when we were estimating for you to present something in June. Okay? And that's for water. And then sewer increased, what did I say, thirteen-point-five percent, I believe?
That's how I was interpreting your question, and his question. That was the reason I wanted to be clear about. Our costs are increasing, and it's reflected in the budget. The increase just isn't as much as we had originally budgeted when we showed it to you back earlier this morning. Got it.
Jim?
Thanks, sir. If you don't have it handy, you can send it to me later, Kim. But what is the, what constitutes the nine-point-six million dollars in the twenty-fourty initiatives?
In the, in the fund balance walk forward, we, we put some money in that line item, and so it was actually, I believe, eleven-point-eight million. It was eleven, eleven-point-eight, eleven-point-eight? So we originally had eleven-point-eight, and we're reducing that by the two-point-two because we have some things that we went ahead and put in the twenty-six budget. And so that's why it's going down to nine-point-six.
Jim, I think if your question, there isn't a list of projects.
No.
Because in twenty-fourty, plus you're going through the refresh this year as well. And as you know, in January, we go through and we get direction from council, and there may be some initiatives that y'all have. And so it's in fund balance, it's not expended until you tell us what the project is.
Okay, okay.
And so two-point-two million dollars has been identified, and we have projects for that.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
Okay.
And as part of the work plan process, we identify, we go through and say, okay, these are the things.
So that allows us the flexibility to?
Because we don't know, it's twenty-fourty. We don't know what projects there will be, you know, to come out of community input and/or council creativity.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at the difference in the, I don't give the exact thing, but what the pickleball and tennis center is costing today in relation to historical amounts shows and reflects that, that emphasis in the community. Right? When we had thirty people down here wanting us to emphasize that and talking to a lot of them, there was still work to be done, so. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's, for time for general discussion, right, Kim?
Yeah, so.
It is.
Are you past item five now?
We are.
You're done.
I'm done. It is for you.
All right, so we actually have two discussions, one is final budget review and then a general discussion. Let's just kind of roll them in together. Anybody have any comments or any other questions or any? I'm, I'm continually amazed that we continue to be able to provide the level of services that we can do. And with the rate of inflation or the consumer price index going up like it did this year, you guys have done a phenomenal job. That CPI is, is, that's a scary one. And that's where it hits, hits all of our employees. Don, you've been remarkably quiet tonight.
I know.
I know, it makes, it's pretty straightforward, it all pretty, it makes sense. There's just, sort of the same level of service, and we're just figuring out how to squeeze a little bit more out of the term, ultimately. It's all twenty-one, so, I don't know, it seems pretty straightforward. I think it's a pretty good job.
Kim, you have any closing comments?
I just want to thank all of you for your support and the guidance that you've provided us this year. And really, I want to thank the director team and Mike because getting us started on closing the Austin Gap, and we really had some good conversations this year, so we appreciate Mike's leadership on that.
I would like to point out, while you're talking about the Austin Gap, the city manager very subtly was able to bring that before our state senator's attention and used the words specifically, so hopefully that'll have some impact down the road a little bit. Maybe not. But anyway, you know, we're going to be battling that, that, the three-point-four-nine, or the, yeah, three-point-five percent from now on. All right, anybody have any other comments? Otherwise, we're going to move on.
And we do have, for anybody who's here in attendance, we have a copy of the receipt that we showed, so you can get one after the meeting from here.
The only, the, the quote closing comment is, what happens next is, we file with the city secretary August the fifth, correct?
We do.
So we, we take everything that we presented to you tonight, we put it in, I'll call it a finalized budget document, and that'll be posted and advertised as the budget, and then it's turned over to the council. And on August the twelfth, if I remember correctly, this is really important, on August the twelfth, your council, as in the past, is asked to basically vote on, I'll call it the maximum tax rate. I don't know what else to call it, but, but it's the tax rate that you are saying it won't be any higher than that. Right? And then on August the twenty, so that's all that is. And then on August the twenty-sixth, the public hearings are held as far as the tax rate and the budget. And that's when the council will have its opportunity to vote and approve the budget and the tax rate. And if I remember correctly, the order is.
Budget.
Budget first, then the tax rate.
And then at ratification.
And then there, yes, and then there's a third vote for ratification of, of it. So that's the process from here on.
And the reason that you vote on the maximum tax rate is because the tax code requires us to post a full-page ad that tells what tax rate is being proposed. And we had, it requires a recorded vote, so we have to, to vote on that.
Right.
And thank you, Jessica. On the twelfth, we also have the final hearing on grant control that's held by the council.
All right, we're going to move on. Item number seven is our second citizen's appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations of individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak shall be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks against any speaker should be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, or corporation. There will be no comments from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have two people that have signed up to speak for this item, and the first one is Mr. Dave Shaw. Dave?
I may use my time this week. Okay. My topic here is some general observations that I'm making without prejudice as to the actual expenditures and estimations, but with some concerns as to process of protocol. I readily admit I don't have complete information on any of these, so just think of it as food for thought, because it's basically impressions at this point. The proposed city budget always is seemingly at the maximum allowable three-point-four-nine-nine percent increase of property tax revenue. Yet the city seems to have a lot of reserve funds readily and easily available for spontaneous expenditures without a lot of citizen awareness input or oversight. Some examples of these are, first one is the Veterans Memorial, initially budgeted three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, was increased with relatively little discussion to one-and-a-half million dollars in a work session. In addition, ultimately, the final cost came in closer to two million dollars. Second, the city had initially agreed to fund half of the SRO program for CIS, CIST a few years ago. Last year, after an informal request from the CIST superintendent, city agreed to fund the whole program for the year in a budget workshop in order to help bail out the CIST for their projected and actual physical year deficit. This was repeated again for the coming year at an estimated cost of about a million and a half dollars. And this is basically for the state of CIST responsibility to fund. Third, the city approved a request to build a pedestrian sidewalk railing on an area of concern on North Dent Tap Road. Cost of this project was about a hundred thousand dollars for a railing of less than three-hundred linear feet and of unspecified construction. There was no apparent challenge to this cost of three-hundred-and-twenty dollars a foot. And then from the Capel Chronicle, I quote, "Back in April, the Capel City Council approved a three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand bid from Playwell Group to build an inclusive playground that can be enjoyed by children of all abilities. On July twenty-second, the council approved a sixty-five percent increase to the Playwell contract, which is now worth five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars. The initial budget request was for half a million dollars by community experiences, which seemingly was too generous based on the first bid amount. However, with the subsequent requested improvements and additional amenities, was no longer apparently adequate. These changes were seemingly accepted without much challenge." And then again, my final unqualified potential observation conclusion is that the city seems to budget with a mindset of maximizing revenue first and then allocating for actual basic needs and discretionary reserve funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. John Buckwald.
I'd like to call on this big relation.
Okay. So if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
Sure.
And I do need to, like, let you know, you have, your subject is questions.
Yes.
We can't answer.
Understood. In fact, but I, I'm curious as to be able to where I can get the answer to the questions. My name is John Buckwald. I actually live in Dallas on a mile street. I'm a candidate for Congress here in District Twenty-four. I'm curious as to what drove a fifty-one percent rate increase to you by Encore? Where did that, when I saw that up there, it seemed strange and egregious. I, I don't know, maybe it's perfectly fine, but I really don't know. How did that happen is one question I have. The other question is, if anything, what would you like the federal government to do to help you close the Austin Gap, if anything? And the answers can range from stay away from us, leave us alone, to, to any other sort of ways that we might be able to help. Grant whatever it is you might need to help, help with all those red bars you see. And those are my two questions. If someone wants to get back to me, I'll give out my card. You can call me, email me at any time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate your participation tonight. That is the end of our formal agenda. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at seven oh four P M.